Trustees to order. At the end, there'll be a public comment section for organizations or individuals to address the board later in the agenda. And continuing with our initiative to increase transparency, the department established a record to record video and audio of official public meetings like this one and make those available on our website. This is an effort to increase transparency and accessibility to the public and our customers. Today's meeting is being recorded under this initiative. I want to know about several requirements for our meeting in order for us to comply with the law on remote meetings. So we'll take roll call by name. Leave the meeting at any time. Please announce your departure and announce your re-arrival when you come back because these must be reported in the meeting minutes. Please state your name before speaking. We'll take all votes of the board by roll call. And without objection from the board, if somebody makes a motion in a second, we'll consider those to be yes votes if no one objects to that in order for efficiency purposes. Finally, texts or other recorded communications between board members during the meeting, even on personal phones, are considered public record to the extent they concern business related to the meeting. I want to extend our warmest welcome to our newest board member, Wynden Hibbler, as a governor appointee to the supplemental retirement board. Wynden will be replacing Nigel Long, who we're sorry to be losing, but I believe Nigel is appointed to the lottery commission and I think there's something that prevents him from being on both boards. So we wish Nigel the best of luck and we welcome Wynden. And he'll serve out Nigel's remaining term until June 30th of '23. And he has a strong connection to the North Carolina community and brings extensive experience in finance and wealth management across public and private sectors, as well as established impact on operations and processes. I look forward to all of his contributions and his experience and look forward to the value that he will bring to all of us. As you know, Mary Bee is retiring and we've been working to find her replacement. And I'm pleased to announce that through our process, Jeff Hancock, who's with us today, has joined DST as the new director of supplemental retirement plans. And Jeff comes to us from BB and T Truist, where he gained significant industry experience and was the director of retirement institutional services. As you know, that BB and T merged with SunTrust. And when those types of things happen, sometimes it creates opportunities. And we have taken advantage of that opportunity in hiring him at the supplemental retirement. So with that, Jeff, welcome. We'll give you an opportunity to say a couple of words toward the end. And welcome. I want to thank the staff for, starting with Tom, and all the team for putting this together today. And before we go into our ethics awareness, I'll ask you to stand and join me for our pledge of allegiance, as well as our salute to North Carolina flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of North Carolina and pledge to the old North State above. Our ethics awareness, identification of potential conflicts is something that all of you are familiar with. Please take a moment to review the proposed agenda to see if you have an actual potential or the appearance of a conflict of interest regarding any matter that's before us. Hearing none. As far as statement of economic interest, that's SCI. In the appendix, you'll find updated SEIs for Wynden. State Government Ethics Act requires any conflicts of interest identified in the evaluations be recorded in the meeting minutes. So the evaluations will be made part of today's minutes to serve as a periodic reminder that these conflicts, any conflicts that have been identified by the state ethics commission. Are there any questions? Adoption of resolution for appreciation of service for Mr. Nigel Long as a member of the supplemental board of trustees. Before I ask for a motion to adopt this resolution, I'll ask the secretary to call the roll.
All right. Treasure Falwell?
Aye, I'm here.
Linda Baron?
Here.
Nels Roslin?
Here.
Steve Bean?
Here.
Wynden Hibbler?
Here.
Chavella Thomas?
Present.
Michael Lewis?
Here.
Jim Lumsden?
Here.
And Lorraine Johnson? Lorraine Johnson? I don't hear Lorraine if she's on mute, but I think she is actually on. Can you see her? Yeah, she's... I'll count her present. Thank you all for joining us. We'll now, I'd ask for a motion for the resolution of appreciation for Mr. Long's service.
Second. Second, Chavella.
Chavella, thank you. Motion is second being made. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the court will call a roll. Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
James Lumsden?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you.
James Lumsden? James? Can't hear you.
Sorry, sorry, I had to mute again. I was away from the phone. Aye, of course.
Michael Lewis?
Aye.
Nels Roslin?
Aye.
Steve Bean?
Aye.
Wynden Hibbler?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. Now entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 11th of this year. Second?
Second, Melinda.
Motion is second being made. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the court will call a roll. Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
Chavella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson? Lorraine Johnson? The rain, you may be muted.
Aye.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I keep muting for background noise, but yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you. James Lumsden?
Aye.
Michael Lewis?
Aye.
Steve Bean?
Aye.
And Wynden Hibbler?
Aye.
Okay, thank you all. Now entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes of March 11th of this year. Second?
Second, Melinda.
Motion is second being made. Any further discussion? Hearing none, the court will call a roll. Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
Chavella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson? Lorraine Johnson? Lorraine, you may be muted.
Aye.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I keep muting for background noise, but yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you. James Lumsden?
Aye.
Michael Lewis?
Aye.
Steve Bean?
Aye.
And Wynden Hibbler?
Aye.
Thank you all. We're now into section five, our legal updates. We'll call and read. And after that, we will be going into a closed session to discuss matters regarding rules. And so, and then after closed session, we'll be coming back into open session and continuing the rest of the agenda. So Reed, you have the floor.
First, I want to provide an update on the proposed legislation to provide more flexibility to the board and the department in establishing and adjusting administrative fees for the plans. As you know, the board passed a resolution in December.
Too much distance.
As you know, the board passed a resolution in December requesting the general assembly establish a process apart from the administrative procedure act for the board and the department to establish and change our administrative fees. As a reminder, staff drafted an amendment to the statute, submitted it to the general assembly. And once again, as a reminder, as I mentioned in the last meeting, the amendment allows fees to be set at a, at a public meeting of the board that is conducted in accordance with the meetings law, as all our meetings are, with at least 30 days' public notice prior to the board meeting and subject to the cap which is our current, our current admin fees of two and a half basis points for the 401K, five basis points for the 403B. Substance of that amendment, of the amendment was incorporated into House Bill 168. 168 was introduced in the House on February 25th, passed the House on April 14th. It's currently in the Senate Committee on Rules and Operations. So they're not really, I wouldn't say substantive update from the last meeting, except that it has passed the, passed the House. So, are there any questions? Then next I have a brief updates on three vendor contracts. The first is a contract renewal with Ernst &amp; Young to provide foreign tax compliance services. That's primarily in India and Taiwan. And when the 401K, 457 were unbundled in 2016, the board and the department retained Ernst &amp; Young for a five-year term through December 31 of last year. And Ernst &amp; Young also provides the similar tax compliance services for the retirement systems and has done so since, actually before Ernst &amp; Young was retained by supplemental retirement plans. The contract included up to two years of renewal. And as I mentioned, in December, the board renewed for six months through June 30 of this year. And the intent was to work to conduct a procurement prior to that time. However, we, we're still working on the, on the documents for the procurement. Therefore, the, the department renewed the contract, again, to allow for additional time for that, that procurement. We're still within the two-year renewal period that we have. We renewed for nine months through March 31 of next year, which is the end of the tax year in, in India. And most of the work and the expense comes from India, so it sort of made sense to go through the end of, into the first quarter of next year. Are there any questions? Foreign tax compliance services. The next contract is, is one with Financial Recovery Technologies for Litigation Support Services. This contract predates the vendor selection policy last year, probably would have required the board's approval anyway, even if the policy were in place, but I wanted to just provide an update on it. It's noted to the board. The current term expires in July and the department plans to renew the contract for another year. Just as background, FRT files claims for SRP, as well as for the pensions, U.S. securities and antitrust class action settlements. In other words, when a case has been settled, they, they have our holdings or they file that, file that recovery for us. They also provide some support in non-U.S. matters, although we haven't been involved yet in any non-U.S. matters. They provide the same services for the, for the pensions. Are there any questions about that contract? Those services? And finally, in regards to proxy voting services, the board intends to, or the department intends to renew the contract of Glass Lewis for another year. We, the contract expires in September and we have the option for another one-year term. We're still, the department's still in the process of evaluating the current proxy voting policy and see if there are any changes to recommend to the board. The, the retirement systems use the same policy that we do, which is the same as the board adopted policy, both the guidelines of Glass Lewis. But we're, once again, as I said, the department through the corporate governance committee is taking another... Are there any, are there any questions about proxy voting policy, proxy voting services? That is, that's all I had.
Thank you, Reed. I'll now pursue it to section 143, 318 dot 11 dash A3. Entertain a motion, closed session. All good? Closed session. Nels? You have the motion, second?
Second.
And Steve, the theme second, motion second. Any further discussion? If not, the court will call a roll. Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
Chavella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson? Lorraine Johnson? I don't hear Lorraine. James Lumsden?
Aye.
Chavella Thomas?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson? James Lumsden?
Aye.
Linda Baron?
Aye.
Michael Lewis?
Aye.
Michael Lewis?
Aye.
Nels Roslin?
Here.
Stephen Bean?
Here.
Wynden Hibbler?
Aye.
And the eyes have it, and for purposes of the general public who will not be participating in the closed session, whether you and Ben estimate a amount of time?
Twenty, probably fifteen, twenty minutes.
Okay. So I'd just suggest that those that are on the call from the public who are not on the board and who are excluded from the closed session, discuss a legal matter. Thank you for joining us at 9:35.
And for the closed session, board members, Ben and Tom, if you would stay as well. And for board members who are offline, if you would hang up, if you're on the phone, hang up. If you're on go-to-meeting, log off and call into the meeting, call into the number that Patty sent you an email. And if you need that number again, let us know.
Reed, do we need to actually sign off of go-to-meeting or just call in on your number?
Um, go ahead and sign off. You'll need to sign off or else we'll, the folks might hear you, the discussion.
Should. We're going to try to call the roll. We're back into open session. And before we call in the roll, we're going to dispense with the agenda item seven momentarily and go ahead and go into the agenda item eight. So I'll call the vote. Here's your phone. Here. Chavella Thomas? Chavella Thomas? I don't hear Chavella. Uh, Lorraine Johnson? Lorraine Johnson? I don't hear Lorraine. James Lumsden?
Here, here, here.
Linda Baron?
Here.
Michael Lewis?
Here.
Nels Roslin?
Here.
Stephen Bean?
Here.
Wynden Hibbler?
I'm here.
Let me try, Chavella Thomas?
I'm here.
Thank you. And Lorraine Johnson? I just didn't hear Lorraine. Okay. All right, we're back into open session. We'll go to item number eight. So item number eight is the budget proposal. Mary's not here with us today. Her husband unfortunately had a bad fall and so she's taking care of him. He's actually had to go to the hospital, so she couldn't be with us. You know, it's, it's what she needed to be taken care of at this time is her husband. So I told her I'd take over the budget item, so I'm going to give that a shot and see how it goes. Just don't have questions? So in your materials, you have the fiscal year 2021, 22 budget. This is item number eight. It's the projected expenses for the next fiscal year, it's the same as the current fiscal year. So you don't, you don't see any bottom line changes in overall spending, zero. But just as a reminder to most of the board, this is the same format, same thing you've seen in the past. Funding source for the SRP, I think Treasure mentioned earlier, is 2.5 basis points on participant account balances for the 401K and 457, and then five basis points for 403B. The proposed budget, you know, the materials contains all the assumptions we're using. Again, it's not really changed from past budgets. If you go to page three, it shows the projected administrative fund balances through the end of the next fiscal year. And you can see where the, after, now we're not having the holiday from the, the fees, the, the balances are projected to go to $6 million for the 401K and $887,000 for the Page four, and Reed already mentioned this, describes top, explains House Bill 168, you know, pending legislation. So we'll see how that goes. So we have, the board will have more flexibility so that we don't have the, the problems we've had with having that balance in the administrative fund. So that's the bottom line, those, lots of detail on it that most of the board members who've been with us have seen in the past. Are there any questions about anything in there, what you've seen or read? Questions regarding the budget? Basically, the only increase in the budget is probably associated with legislative pay raises.
This is Steve. I do have one question. Under, I guess, page three, your budget summary, the last short paragraph, about a loan taken at 7.25%.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
Help me understand that interest rate or the...
That was pretty... So we're, I'm interested in the answer to. And, you know, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is that we needed the loan, it was the decision by the board to start the 403B program, and that interest rate was the assumed rate of return at the time. And, and so that's the rate that was, that was decided on by the board. I don't know if there's any more, that Reed?
I wasn't here at that time, but I, that's my understanding as well.
Like a very high rate and I just... The 403B had to have some, had front-loaded costs to get it to stand up. Before me, when this was created, that money had, so the decision was made, I guess, to borrow it. And the interest rate that the previous administration cited on was just the assumed rate of return on the pension plan. I don't know why they picked that one instead of a government bond, I don't know why, or our cost of ca, I don't know why they picked it, but they, they did pick it. Okay, that's fine. We'll be having a more in-depth discussion about the 403B and at a later point because it, we stood it up, but it's, it's barely standing. The, there's a chance that this time next year, our ABLE program might have more assets in it than our 403B, which is to give you an idea of, of not how bad the 403B plan is, but there's so much competition, somebody will correct me, but just in Mecklenburg County, and that an average teacher, I think, has 17 403B vendors to choose from in one county. And I won't tell you what goes on with that. It may involve donuts or TVs or anything in between donuts and TVs, but there's a lot going on with, everything going on with how people get access to public service, public servants, to try to pitch them on their 403B versus the lowest-cost 403B in the state, which is ours. And so we'll have a more robust discussion about that because I really don't want to be in any business where A, the competition is doing that, or B, where we can't be the best at it. And I, so, but that's, that's a long answer to your long question, but the money had to be borrowed to stand it up.
And, and that loan was from the qualified excess benefit arrangement account through teasers. And so since teasers has the 7.25% return, I don't think that was in the, in the information, but it was from teasers and so it was paid back to the, what we call QIBA teasers.
I was unaware of it until just a few months ago, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
More questions about the budget? And those of you who have been approached and who have access to 403Bs, I'd always be interested in your experiences with what I may have just described. So more about that later. So...
I'll make a motion, we approve this recommendation. This is Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Motion second being made. If that's not the budget going down the... Going down the spose law. Said the spose law. Any further discussion, hearing none, the court will call a roll. Treasure Falwell?
Aye.
Lorraine Johnson?
Aye.
James Lumsden?
Aye.
Linda Baron?
Aye.
Michael Lewis?
Aye.
Stephen Bean?
Aye.
Wynden Hibbler?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll now go to gen item number nine. And we'll hear from Prudential.
Please drive up. Thank you, Treasure. Good morning, everyone. I hope everyone is doing well and that they can hear me.
Where, is Michael or Matt?
This is Michael right now, Treasure.
And where are you?
I am in Columbus, Ohio this morning.
That's not an hour behind us, is it?
No, that's same time as you.
Oh.
Eastern time.
Make up an hour. I was just hoping you were going to be able to do that. All right.
Thank you very much. So today, you're going to be hearing from both myself and Matt Herman. We're going to focus our comments today on providing highlights from the, the first quarter report. And where we really want to focus our update today is on a follow-up from the conversation at the last quarterly board meeting, focusing on Mr. Treasure, your, your two key questions around how are we doing in terms of assets saved and where are those rollover assets going? In addition, Matt Herman's going to speak to the great work that the retirement educational and counselors team are doing and how we're continuing to engage your participants and employers in the ongoing virtual environment that we still find ourselves. So that, that's where we'd like to spend, spend our time. Before, before I dive into our update, though, I'd like to just extend a warm welcome to both Wynden Hibbler and also Jeff Hancock. Really looking forward to getting to know both of you and working with you on the supplemental retirement programs. And I, I know that Mary's not there today, but I also just for, for the, for the public record, wanted to just publicly express my congratulations.
Michael Lewis?
Hi.
And Wynden Hibbler? Wynden Hibbler?
I was on mute. Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we're on to, we'll go back and quickly, if you aren't ready, adjust agenda number seven. There may be a subsequent motion than what was in our, our board material regarding possible action regarding rulemaking.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. This is Nels. That consistent with the board's longstanding approach to discharging its fiduciary duty to the plan participants, the board directs staff to draft additional policies regarding the administration of the plans and present the policies to the board for its consideration.
Chabella Thomas, second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Thank you, Nels. Thank you, Reed, for putting it together in short order. Hearing no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll.
Treasure fall out?
Hi.
Lorraine Johnson? Lorraine Johnson?
Hi.
James Lumsden?
Hi.
Linda Barrett?
Hi.
Michael Lewis?
Hi.
Stephen Bean?
Hi.
Wynden Hibbler?
Hi.
Thank you. We'll now go to agenda item number nine. And we'll hear from Prudential.
Let's drive up.
Thank you, Treasure. Good morning, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well and that they can hear me.
Is Michael or Matt?
This is Michael right now, Treasure.
And where are you?
I am in Columbus, Ohio this morning.
That's not an hour behind us, is it?
No, that's same time as you.
Oh.
Eastern time.
Make up an hour. I was just hoping you were going to be able to do that.
All right. Thank you very much. So today you're going to be hearing from both myself and Matt Herman. We're going to focus our comments today on providing highlights from the first quarter report. And where we really want to focus our update today is on a follow-up from the conversation at the last quarterly board meeting, focusing on Mr. Treasure, your, your two key questions around how are we doing in terms of assets saved? And where are those rollover assets going? In addition, Matt Herman's going to speak to the great work that the retirement educational and counselors team are doing and how we're continuing to engage your participants and employers in the ongoing virtual environment that we still find ourselves. So that, that's where we'd like to spend, spend our time. Before, before I dive into our update though, I'd like to just extend a warm welcome to both Wynden Hibbler and also Jeff Hancock. Really looking forward to getting to know both of you and working with you on the supplemental retirement programs. And I, I know that Mary's not there today, but I also just for, for the, for the public record, wanted to just publicly express my congratulations and gratitude to Mary, whose last day will be coming up at the end of June. I've so enjoyed the working relationship with Mary over the past eight years. And throughout Mary's tenure, just truly appreciated her candor, leadership, creativity, and the strategic lens that she used to continue, continually elevate the plans while always being extremely laser focused on the best interests of your members. So I consider Mary a great friend and mentor and wish her nothing but happiness as she starts this next chapter of her life. With that, I also want to just really quickly proactively address the recent market noise and rumor related to the Prudential, related to Prudential Retirement from the Bloomberg News article from a few weeks ago. As a public company, we cannot and do not comment on rumors or market speculation, but I just wanted to proactively address that. Our commitment, our focus, and our dedication to you is stronger than ever. And the strategy, goals, and objectives that we were executing on yesterday are the same ones that we're working, executing on today. And will be the same ones that we're executing on tomorrow. And you have my word to keep you informed on any, any news or updates that I hear in regards, regards to that. Lastly, before I dive into the, the actual board report, as you may remember, at the last meeting, we provided a cybersecurity update. Since that meeting, the Department of Labor has issued guidance related to cybersecurity. And I just wanted to follow up and share with the board that through a recent review of our DOL guidance, it indicates that we are meeting all of the standards that were identified. And we've also done a thorough evaluation of our SOC 2 documentation to link back as our proof of our statement of DOL compliance. But we'll have more to share there over the coming weeks is that those are, those new guidance regulations are looked at in more detail. So with that, I'd like to move to slide five of the report. If you look at slide five, it shows some rolling 13-month trends and how we're comparing across contributions versus distributions, where we see that distributions are still slightly outpacing contributions. We can see then how the average participant balance, the active participation rate, and the active average employee deferral has continued to trend upward over the past 13 months. And if you flip to page six, it shows those same, same healthy trends in terms of the total unique participants with the balance continues to increase. Total enrollments, you can see the drastic drop in March of 20, when we first moved to the virtual environment and how the enrollment trend has continued to grow stronger as we've gotten more and more accustomed to the virtual, as has your participants and employers. The goal maker usage rate, both, both among total members and new enrollees continues to be strong. And we continue to be down below where we were in terms of total number of new loans at this time 13 months ago. When you look at page seven of our summary, we continue to exceed our contractual and stretch goals in terms of the average monthly contributions, the active participation rate, and the goal maker utilization. So far in the first quarter, we've added two new employers to the 401K plan. Three new employers have adopted the 457 plan. We've had four employers adopt the contribution accelerator program in the first quarter. And then we've had six new employers either add, change, or enhance their employer contribution. Despite some of the headwinds faced over the last year, so far, we have not seen any employers stop or lower their employer contribution programs, but it's something that we continue to monitor and will report if we hear anything on that, that, that side. As of right now, we currently have about 521 employers that make some type of an employer contribution. And to put that into, into perspective for, for you, in an average month, employer contributions account for about 33% of the total flow for total contributions into the program. So with that, I'd like to move to page 40. Page 40 through 44 is where I'm going to spend the remainder of my.
It's going to be hard because.
Go ahead. Is there, is that a question?
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, so page 40 through 44 is where I would like to spend the rest of my comments before I pass it over to my colleague, Matt Herman. So these are, these slides 40 through 44 are brand new slides. And I'd like to thank both Tom and Mary for the development and partnership with me on building out these slides. So these slides really came as a brainstorm from the last board meeting, where Mr. Treasure, you asked questions around trying to get at how are we doing in terms of total assets saved? And then also wanting to have an analysis on those assets that are rolling out, where are they going? And that's really what, what slide 40 tries to get at in terms of how are we doing in terms of total assets saved? So if you look, if you look at the top chart, we've gone all the way back from 2015. And what we've done is, is we've looked at the total plan assets and then we look participant by participant based on the current status of their account that their employer has told us of whether they are active or whether they are in terminated status. And then from there, we've, we've added up all of those participants' account balances that show in terminated status to really get to a number of the percentages of your overall total assets that are in terminated or retirements, retired status. And from, and you can see that percentage in, in the fourth column in, in that chart there at the top in terms of the total assets that are in terminated or retired status by, by plan year. And then we did an analysis out of how many rollovers out we saw in each of those years. And the total assets that were then saved from that eligible population in that terminated or retirement status to get to Mr. Treasure, your, your end-all question of, well, what are we doing in terms of the total percentage of assets saved? And that's in that far right-hand column there. And you can see how that number has, has pretty much been consistent, but slightly increased since 2015, where it's right at about 80%. So the, the key theme there is, is that while, while in the average year, about 80% of those assets that are eligible to roll out or leave are staying, the total percent of assets saved continues to grow each year based on the continued population of those baby boomers that are retiring with those large account balances and moving into that phase. If you look for just example to bring that home, in 2015, the total dollar amount of assets saved was about 1.8 billion, where last year, the total dollar amount saved in terms of total assets saved was 3.5 billion. So as the plans have grown and you've had more people shift into that terminated status, it's just that, that eligible book block of assets continues to increase. And you can, you can see that kind of played out even more with the, the, the graph that we build at the bottom of page 40 that just breaks out the difference in terms of rollover outs year by year and cash distributions year by year. And the comment that I would make there that obviously I'm sure stands out to you as well, cash distributions were pretty much in line with rollover outs. But you had a significant spike in cash distributions in 2020 driven by the, the CARES Act legislation for folks taking advantage of that legislation to do a, to do a distribution last year. The one other piece that I want to make sure I call out before I move into where are the assets going is that, you know, several years back, we did a survey where we surveyed participants that had either rolled their money out or were in that nearing retirement phase. The survey really focused on wanting to understand for those folks that did roll out, why they did ultimately decide to roll out, and those folks that were nearing retirement to try to understand their thought process and thinking around the benefits of staying in plan and their thoughts as they, they, they got near retirement. We used a lot of the information from that survey to help inform our strategic communication plan over the past few years. One of the things that we're going to do later this summer is we're going to dust off that survey and do it again based on current population and recent folks that have either entered that nearing retirement space or have ruled out to compare those results now to where they were several years ago as a new learning to then influence the strategic communication plan going forward. So that's, that survey is slotted for sometime in the second half of this year. And as we partner with, with Christie and your team on that survey, once we get that done later this year, we'll come back and, and share that with the board. The next slide that I want to, want to shift to is slide 42. So Treasure, Mr. Treasure, this gets to your second question of just really wanting to understand and analyze where the assets are going when a rollover takes effect. So we, we manually dug into all of our rollover detail to track down what was the total number of rollovers that occurred over the past four years broken down by each year? How many different institutions did they go to? What was the average rollover that was taken? And then wanted to provide then back to you what those firms were each year, the top 10 firms, and then the number of participants by those top 10 firms and how they compared in terms of the total dollar amount and the total percentage of total rollovers. So you could see that analysis for both 2017, 2018, 2019, and 2020. And for those of us that have worked on the plans for, for a number of years now, when we look at this top 10 list, there's, there's really no surprises here from our end in terms of, you know, what we, what we, we see in here when we're interacting with your participants in terms of firms that do approach them and play in this space. Page 43, just another view of those top institutions for rollover outs from 2017 to 2020, just trying to break out where you see the same firms consistently stacking up year over year. Just another way to try to slice and dice the data. And then slide 44, this is the same view in terms of where the assets are going. But what we did here was we tried to build a one pager that takes the best of page 40 and the best of page 42 and show it in a rolling 12-month and also a court, a current quarter. So for, from a rolling 12-month perspective of April 1st of last year through March 31st of this year, the total percent of assets saved is about 77.43%. But in first quarter of this year, the total percentage of assets saved was 95.86%. So I, so this is a new slide here that we wanted, would like to keep quarter after quarter that can help us really track how we're doing over a rolling 12 and how we're doing over the past quarter that just expired too. And then the, the two, the two charts at the bottom show over a rolling 12, the top 10 firms in terms of rollover outs. And then the chart on the right shows just over the first quarter, the top 10 firms in terms of the rollover outs and how it compares. So I tried to hit that at a very high level, but I wanted to just pause here and, and see, you know, what questions or discussions there might be now that we've been able to, to really go over that detail and analysis and, and circle back with Mr. Treasure, you and the board on, on that.
Any questions from board? Thank you for doing this work. It's always exciting when we get a new slide or two. Out of 500, I just want to, you mentioned Christie and I just, especially for the board member, I just want, and Jeff specifically, I want to tell you why this is important. Number one is that fortunately or unfortunately, and we're living in a world where data and who has data and data breaches or as you know, whether it's Colonial Pipeline or something that might have happened inside our very plan in the last eight months. It's very important. And as a mechanic, it was just logically very difficult for me to, to put a bow on how some of these financial institution were getting so much access to so many of our members in some respects, maybe even before we even knew they were retiring. We're pretty damn close. And I don't mind them doing that, but I just, as I say, as a mechanic and, you know, whether it's placards on a windshield or having special little meetups with people in these school systems who they found out were retiring and bringing them all together. Somehow or another, these folks were figuring all this out, maybe ahead of us. That's number one. And this really goes back to Jeff, appreciate this, the culture of BB and T, which is, is to focus on, if you get the why right and figure out the how. One of the reasons he was hired is that we try to do that culture here. In addition to his resume and experience. So the, the how part, I mean, the why part is, is A, were we having breaches where people were getting access to who these people are? And therefore suggesting them roll, because this is the second most, third most stressful part of their entire life. One possibly is when they got married. One is when they lost a spouse or a child. And then this is probably the third most stressful part of their life when they, sometimes they don't take a walk or sleep on it or take a breath. They just decide and they sign papers and all of a sudden the assets are gone. But the, the, the biggest reason for me on all this is that, as I said earlier, we are number one in this business. NC obviously stands for North Carolina, but also stands for nothing compares. There's no plan that can operate in this state that can compare with the expense ratio of the ones that we're offering. And the third part of this, and no disrespect to anybody who's, has worked in retirement or even Prudential or, or is that from time to time, I get pitched on conscientious type of services to, to wrap more arms around our members. And the reason that I've never said yes to those things is because I just didn't think that we had done a good enough job. Christie's done a fantastic job and you can look at these numbers just in a short period of time. I've explained to people, if you can do it cheaper somewhere else, then go do it. They can't. We don't say things like that. We're not lawyers, but we don't, lawyers don't ask questions they don't know the answers to. We don't say things like that unless we know what the analysis is going to look like. And the second point, which she's been driving home, and I want to publicly recognize her for this, is that this is a decision that never has to be made. You can leave this stuff in here for the rest of your life. And I just don't think we had ever done a good enough job of explaining to people, there's no decision here that needs to be made. You can leave this stuff here for the rest of your life. So I appreciate the board allowing me to talk about the why this was so important to me. Because I don't like seeing people get ripped off. And we know that's probably happening when, when assets leave here.
Thanks, Mr. Treasure. Yeah, so, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say it's, you, you fell too short. It's not only the most efficient. I consider it one of the best managed, so the quality is there as well. I don't know why anyone would leave it. I mean, I've, I've often thought I ought to go back to work for the state just so I could participate. Anyway, thank you for your comments.
Who said that? Jim Austin, I think.
That was me, Jim. Oh, that's Jim.
Thank you. All right, next.
All right. With the, with that, Mr. Treasure, I'll turn it over to Matt Herman for just a quick update from how the retirement education counselor team is doing with your participants.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning. Thank you for your time. Great to be with you all. Great to be with you all. Good morning. And I echo all the comments that were just shared. We run into a lot of the similar insights and things as we work with folks across the state. And I echo Mike's comments also, just a quick congratulations to Wynden Hibbler and Jeff Hancock. Really looking forward to working with you. And congratulations to Mary at retirement. I'll take a few quick minutes because I want to make sure I keep you all on track as far as time's concerned. Offer some perspectives. I'm going to spend all my time on slide 49, but I'll share some things and share some insights and some context maybe behind these numbers. When we were together last quarter, I shared just kind of some insights as we rounded out the year, reflecting on 2020, what we had learned and how we were applying those, those learnings as a team moving into this year. And at that time, we talked about our partnerships with employers, how important those are to connect folks to education, group meetings and how innovation and being creative and finding new ways to serve folks is so critical. And I'll share some things on that. Also combining our deep relationships that we've had, many of these for over 20 years with employers and employees and connecting them to the investments we're making in technology as well to bring that experience to life. And then also the partnership with not just folks that are working on the DC side, the supplemental plans, but also Vicky Roberts and her amazing team in the DB Education to make sure folks have a holistic view of retirement and retirement readiness. I think you should look at the numbers on slide 49, think about the updates that Mike just shared. Like we're executing very well against this plan and making really good progress. So through the numbers, by the numbers, you look at page 49. One of the things we talked about last quarter is we saw a nice steady increase in our engagement when the pandemic started up until December. And I'm happy to report as we look at 49, we're seeing similar trends, a nice steady increase in our activity when you look at January, February, and March. I'll point out a few things here, group meetings. We moved from December into January and saw an increase in group meetings. Saw that steady increase through March with a total of 353 in the month, or in the quarter, first quarter of the year. Group meeting attendees continuing to increase. Individual meetings, you'll see each month, January, February, March, almost 2,000 one-on-ones. And those monthly numbers are higher than the average monthly number of Q4. So an increase there as well. And then of course employer meetings, which we spend a lot of time talking to our employer contacts, the leaders there to make sure we're connected. And we're seeing an increase in those engagements as well and higher numbers than the average in Q4. So really good results there. That's by the numbers. I think when you also look at some of the anecdotal things, some of the projects we've had, some of the special focus items, and also thinking about just the conversation that you all just had. We're doing a lot of special things to reach out to folks as well, especially now during the pandemic. Retirees is a huge focus for us. We are doing several things that are a little new, some enhancements there to our engagement. We do roadmaps, retirement seminars for retirees. And just in Q1 for our three state level seminars that we offer, we had 1,800 attendees. And we're doing a lot of other sessions regionally at an employer level, but just these three state level webinars, 1,800 attendees. I think that's important because we started doing those more aggressively in October last year during the annual enrollment period. And we've seen really steady increases in the interest and folks registering for these events. So we're going to continue to do those moving forward. The other thing we're doing, and I shared a little bit of this last meeting, is we're actually doing courtesy call outreach to retirees. So folks that have completed their Form 6, they're getting ready to retire to kind of complement our, our group meetings and our traditional one-on-ones. We're actually proactively calling those retirees at home. We've completed 2,500 points of outreach since the pandemic started to connect with retirees because we know how important it is. Treasure follow-up, things that you mentioned, I agree 100%. There's a lot of confusion that folks have out there, even in light of the education we provide. So we want to go out of our way to make sure we help them, let them know they have a choice. And that choice could be, you don't have to make a choice. You can stay. Not only that, if you were thinking about leaving, a lot of times we know that that's because they want to consolidate assets. You can consolidate in the plan. And we have tremendous reception to those points of outreach and those conversations we're having. And that's something we want to continue to do as we move forward. Couple other things we're also doing, employer education. That has been a huge focus of this board of staff for the last couple of years. So as we moved into 2021, we actually decided to do special education sessions for employers specifically. We did our first one in March. It was our inaugural session. We had 310 registrations for that event. A good portion of those came just in the first two or three days of those invites being sent out. That was across 182 employers. So really good feedback, really good results from that as far as engagement and comments like, we love this, please do these again. This was very helpful and it's really important. We want to connect just, not just employees for resources, but we make a lot of resources available to those employers as well. Our website, the reporting that we make available, and even the team that we have available to assist them. So that's something we're going to continue. And our thought is to continue those quarterly. So we're already getting ready for the next one. And then finally, we're also doing special sessions, special education sessions that are really geared towards folks that maybe it's harder to get access to because of their role, because of their location, because of the type of job they have. Two big areas of focus for us continue to be the K through 12 space, the teachers as well as law enforcement officers. That's including special sessions that are really geared towards their needs. And some of the times it's just as simple as making ourselves available at the times they're available. You know, we've done some sessions for law enforcement officers early in the morning. We're doing some things later at night. We're even doing some special weekend sessions for folks, whether that's one-on-ones or group meetings and different types of employers. So we're really trying to create flexibility in our engagement model. We've been doing this for many years. As I mentioned last quarter, we want to be flexible though. We want to be creative. So we're not just sitting and resting on our laurels. We're continuing to try to find new ways to engage and serve because ultimately our role is to connect people to the resources, to the education, and make sure they know that they are supported and that we're here for them. So a lot of good stuff going on. I'm really excited about our progress as we move into the next quarter. I'll share some more updates, but focusing on flexibility, creativity and those partnerships. And I do want to thank again Tom and the entire team, Mary, Christie, Vicky, Nan, Jeff, looking forward to work with you. There's so much great work going on and the partnership has been amazing. So thank you for everything and thank you to this board for your leadership and for your support.
Thank you. Any questions for board members? Great. We'll now go to Paul Galliard for our investment update. Paul, on the stable value portfolio review, we're a little bit behind time. So appreciate you taking that into consideration.
Paul, we can't hear you if you, from you.
Can everybody hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Treasurer. And, you know, welcome again to the new members, Jeff Hancock and Wynden Hibbler. We, you know, I look forward and Galliard looks forward to working with you in the future. You know, I will try to keep my comments brief, starting on page two under section one, you know, with some details of the Wells Fargo Asset Management sale and as described in our last meeting. To refresh, basically February 23rd, Wells Fargo, the bank announced the sale of WFAM, which stands for Wells Fargo Asset Management, which Galliard Capital Management is a part of. They had entered in an, into an agreement to be sold to an consortium of two private equity firms, GTCR out of Chicago and Reverend's Capital for a deal about 2.1 billion. As mentioned, the deal is scheduled to close in the second half of this year. You know, and, and to put in perspective, the importance of our client relationship with you, with the state, you were our first client call with Lauren and Mary. Mike Norman, who's our co-president, who has been to a few of these meetings in the past, and myself represented Galliard. The one requirement from our clients is a consent letter, which is required by the Investment Advisors Act of 1940, which basically requires client consent for the assignment of the investment management contract. Galliard, these contracts are IMAs, are investment management agreements. And IMAs entered into by an advisor that has been acquired by another entity are deemed to be assigned under the Investment Advisors Act. So with that, we needed the consent letter signed. You know, we did work with, with staff and we were happy to report we got that signed on last week, on May 20th. I'd like to thank the board and staff for, for working with us on that. You know, some points that, you know, since our last meeting with, you know, new points with a new ownership, post the firm announcement in February, we have received a lot of positive feedback from both the consultant and client communities. We have seen, you know, continued awarding of both stable value, separate account, and fund mandates since the new announcement. So that's, that's always good to hear. Progress toward the sale by Wells Fargo Asset Management later this summer continues as expected. And with those consent letters, we've received about 62% back. You know, wrap providers are okay with the change and we've worked with them. And the, the private equity firms have assured us that Galliard will remain in Minnesota and we are going to stay in our same offices. Galliard's name will stay the same. But the new company that was formerly called Wells Fargo Asset Management, we're calling NewCo, New Company. They will actually be moving into our building in Minnesota as well. And, but there are no plans to shut any WFAM offices over the country. So really good to hear there. So if we could turn the page to, to page three on who we are. You know, one, one other item that we did, that we did work with the staff over the last quarter was successfully transferring the Stable Value Separate Account Custodian from Wells Fargo to BNY Mellon on April 1st. And I would like to thank again the board and staff for a smooth, successful transition. BNY Mellon now has custody over all of the, the Stable Value Separate Accounts. And on this who we are page, left-hand column as a 331, our assets under management were about 94.2 billion, which is down about 1.2 billion since last quarter. And put this into perspective, our all-time high was last October at 97.4 billion, which shows, you know, more or less that asset flows, inflows in 2020 are, have been pretty sticky. And we haven't seen a mass migration of assets out of our stable value totals. Looking at what makes up this 94.2 billion, 77.8 billion is in stable value assets, which represents roughly about 83% of our total. The remaining 17% represents our standalone high-quality fixed income mandates. Consistent 84 Stable Value Separate Account clients, which North Carolina is a part of. We have 100 employees on staff. You know, during the first quarter, we had a couple ads in our marketing support and our fund direct teams. We had six departures, which is pretty common around this time of year. And it was across a variety of teams, operations, technology, RFPs and that client support. Two were a result of employee moves to a new state. All were submitted prior to the, to sale announcement. So, and, and also want to add that none went to any competitor of ours. So good to hear there. Middle column, 200 institutional clients, 85% of them have been with us for more than five years, which includes the state of North Carolina, who have been with us since December 1st, 2010. Which is about 10 and a quarter years. And again, like to thank you for your continued faith in Galliard. In the right column, you know, we continue to emphasize stable value fixed income as we've done over the past 25 years, senior staff experience at two decades or more. So pretty consistent, you know, with what I've mentioned in the previous quarters. If we flip ahead to page four, this, this page again shows the snapshot of the state of North Carolina Stable Value Fund as of March 31st, 2021. And again, the portfolio has continued to provide consistent expected statistics. On the left-hand column, we see that assets as a 331 were roughly 2.37 billion, which has grown roughly about 13.1 million since last quarter or relatively flat. Breaking down that 13.1 million, about 1.5 million came from, you know, positive net inflows and the lion's share of growth came from interest earnings. Looking at the portfolio characteristics on the lower left-hand quarter between last quarter and March 31st, we can see that the average book value wrap, financial strength ratings have not changed over the quarter, remain strong at A plus. Same can be said with the underlying quality of bonds that make up the state of North Carolina Stable Value Fund, where they stayed at double A over the last quarter. Number of contract issuers did not change and remain that five. The net blended yield or crediting rate did dip some over the past quarter by roughly 21 basis points, which would be expected as the numbers follow the directions of prevailing interest rates. You know, the underlying yields however rose during the quarter, as you can see with the number blow, going from 67 basis points to 1.01%, which is the first time we've seen interest rates rise since the third to fourth quarters in 2019. The increase in yields we saw in the first quarter reflected stronger investment sentiment and repricing of risk and also it, you know, with some thoughts of inflation being priced in. Yields are still quite lower than they were back in 2019, you know, when they were over 2%. So there's still room for yields to grow, to get back to a more normal state. But as I mentioned, this could take some time. You know, and just putting that 1.01% in perspective, you know, when we look at comparable alternatives, say a 91-day T bill, which are, would represent money market funds or the three-year constant maturity treasuries, that 1.01% compares much higher than the yield of 0.03% for a 91-day T bill and 0.35% for a three-year CMT as of March 31st. Duration right underneath there increased roughly about a quarter year. And this is mainly due to the mortgage extension in the underlying bond portfolios, especially those compared to the Barclays Intermediate Aggregate Index. You know, when interest rates increase, there is less demand for mortgage refinancing. And this leads to this mortgage extension. So the duration increase is not specific to the state of North Carolina Stable Value Fund. As I've noticed in all my separate account clients, duration move up roughly about a quarter, a quarter of a year. That being said, the duration of the portfolio still remains an acceptable range and there's no concerns. You see that market to book ratio on the bottom, you know, while market yields have fallen dramatically during 2020 and the blended yield or that crediting rate will over time follow the direction of interest rates, we would see the, the blended yield move lower, all being equal. But that's stable values market to book ratio again, will help mitigate the impact in the fall of, of yields. So again, that 3.13% gain will be amortized over, over the duration of the fund and added back to the blended yield to kind of mitigate the, the underlying, you know, 1.01% in yields. And we should see that, that amortization, you know, at about 46 basis points per year with all else being equal. The reason why we didn't see the increase in the underlying yields impacted direction of the crediting rate is because these effects occur on a lag due to that, that amortization of the gain over the duration. But if interest rates continue their upward trajectory, we should see the, the rate of decrease of the blended yield slow to potentially increase in the future. The column on the right shows that assets have been pretty consistently growing over the past few years. And again, as the portfolio distribution below shows, you know, the, the portfolio remains consistent in the underlying allocations with a small liquidity buffer. It further demonstrates that the portfolio remains fully invested in the fixed income market. If we turn ahead to page five, this page shows the actual participant results from the strong metrics provided on the previous page. We see the strong, steady and consistent long-term relative outperformance we've been able to provide to the state of North Carolina's 401K plan participants. This page is, shows what the participant experience was as of March 31st. Net of all fee performance over the first quarter and last year, I'll perform, you know, the, the benchmark by roughly 42 basis points and impressively over the last year, 207 basis points. Yeah. And even over longer timeframes, five, 10 years, we've been able to provide net of fee excess return of 76 and 116 basis points respectively. Very strong relative long-term performance provided by the underlying investments. Yeah. And that market value premium remained a significant driver of performance as well. Turning ahead to page six, we see the historical cash flows. And again, over the first quarter of 2021, we saw some inflows in January. They were offset by outflows in February, March. But again, overall relatively flat over the quarter. The message on this page is that the figures here do not appear to be much different from any of our other Stable Value Separate Accounts. And these flows seem more consistent with the historical flows of the state of North Carolina, dated back all the way to 2017. So no concerns on this page. Flipping to page seven, again, these are the rolling historical portfolio characteristics. And again, over the, roughly the last nine quarters of data shown, we see the ongoing amortization, the underlying gains show a pretty stable historical net blended yield in the upper left-hand corner. And again, that's And again, that's the, the participant experience there. And as I mentioned before, we would expect this number to drift lower. But again, that one oh three point one three market to book ratio will help mitigate this decline. And so will an increase in the underlying yields. The historical duration, as I mentioned, has been, you know, pretty consistent around three years. It, it went up a little bit, but again, it's still nothing out of the realm of what we've seen in the past. On the upper right-hand part of the page, the market book has recently decreased. You know, as the underlying yields have risen over the past quarter, which has resulted in a little bit weaker market value performance. These two charts, you know, on the right can practically be folded over on each other. But, you know, the statistics on this page are what we expected and there's no concerns. Flipping ahead to page eight. Again, this details the book value wrapper allocations. And, and as I mentioned before, they remain consistent since the past quarter. And as mentioned earlier, they all remain investment grade and have maintained the same financial strength ratings from a year ago, and all are two notches above our lowest minimum allowable weighted average rating of A minus. Do have some good news, as you can see on the right-hand columns. Over the first quarter, we saw continued positive news with three RAP providers providing fee reductions from American General Life, MetLife and Nationwide. While we have seen fees coming down, I would guess that fifteen basis points will be the floor for now as none of our, our ten RAP providers that we work with have gone lower than fifteen basis points as of now. So we are moving in the right direction here. Turning to page eleven. We highlight the fees charged on the stable value fund. And again, we have another good message to share that fees have dropped over the past quarter by the tune of roughly one point eight percent or a half a basis point when we take out that two point five basis point overlay for the North Carolina administrative fee. So if you took that out of the twenty-nine four total, you'd have twenty-six point nine without that. And that compared to last quarter when we didn't have that two point five basis point overlay fee, and that was twenty-seven point four basis points. So, you know, main source of this reduction, as I just mentioned, one of those three RAP fee reductions. And again, overall, a good story to tell with fees moving, moving lower. If we turn to page thirteen. We see the, we see the rolled up total portfolio statistics and the manager allocation column had, on the left, is not materially changed over the quarter. You know, the external manager allocation has remained near fifty percent consistently. Among the underlying fixed income sector allocations, the portfolios have added roughly two percents to US treasuries as of quarter end, coming from reduction mainly in agency MBS or mortgage-backed securities and cash allocations. You know, the underlying duration distribution, as I described earlier, has shifted a bit more to the three to five and five-year plus buckets. But again, it's consistent with what we've seen in many of our portfolios. Moving ahead to page fourteen. Now we take a, we take a look at, these are the actual market value returns of the underlying fixed income managers. And we see that the relative performance of the quarter for the last three months was mixed, with some managers slightly outperforming the benchmark and some slightly underperforming. That being said, all the underlying strategies outperformed the benchmarks over all longer-term time periods measured on this page. And looking specifically at the last three months, you know, the negative returns were expected as we saw an increase in interest rates. You know, and a theme among the managers was a movement to a more conservative stance as inflation expectations rose at the margins. Galliard's specific portfolio positioning as it relates to inflation is that, you know, first off, we don't take duration bets. Yet we have been shading a little bit higher in duration as I've noticed, as I've mentioned previously. We also don't own treasury inflation protected securities generally, although we have in the past. So what are we doing? So given where spread levels are almost historic lows right now, and the potential for rising rates due to inflationary pressures, we are holding a little bit more in cash and being very cautious whenever we buy anything, especially further out in the yield curve. So we want to be prepared if there could be some volatility in the near term in the summer and fall in response to these inflationary pressures pushing up rates, which will weigh on balance sheet and borrowing as borrowing costs increase. So. And the chance that the Fed starts tapering sooner than the market expects. This extra cash on the sidelines will give us some dry powder put to work to take advantage of some short-term dislocations. But, you know, given how tight spreads are, we usually are not missing much, we're not missing much if we pass on a deal. You know, but we do take, we take advantage of solid opportunities when they come. So. You know, if, if we look ahead to page fifteen, I won't go through all the, all the commentary on this next page. But, you know, really the, the quarterly commentary for the underlying managers and a main theme here is that for those that outperformed, they were overweight to spread sectors, mainly corporates. Were, were beneficial and, and those taking more of a high-quality bias detracted from their performance. So being shorter duration, the benchmark was also beneficial and being longer detracted as those rates rose. There is one thing I would like to point out on this page too. Genesyn, they came off our, our Galliard watch list in February of twenty-twenty-one. And to give you a little bit of perspective there. Genesyn was added to our watch list in twenty-nineteen as a result of a longer-term underperformance relative to its primary benchmark and peer universe. While on the watch list, our external manager oversight working group continue to closely monitor portfolio positioning and key drivers of performance. While adhering to their investment philosophy and strategy, Genesyn's longer-term investment performance returned to meeting longer-term return expectations following a rebound in performance during twenty-twenty. As performance returned within expectations, Galliard has removed Genesyn from our watch list during the first quarter of this year. And it is important to note that Genesyn remained on our, our list of recommended external managers while being evaluated on the watch list. So good news there. Those were pretty much the comments I had for, for the group. Were there any questions about the Galliard Stable Value Portfolio?
Any questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much, Paul.
Okay, thank you.
Happy Memorial Day.
Happy Memorial Day to everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. We'll now go to Callan for a 401 and 457 update.
Good morning. Can everyone hear me? This is Weston Lewis.
Perfectly.
Great. Thank you all. I'm going to go ahead and skip to, I believe it will be page one oh nine. And just in, in light of the busy agenda and where we are, I will keep my comments brief. But I will provide some context around to, around the environment in which your active managers operated. Equity markets, value outperformed growth. A lot of this had to do with the cyclical bent of some of your value sectors. Energy in particular performed well, as did financials, a lot of the reopening sectors. This would be airlines, retail REITs, hospitality, those did well. While some of your work from home sectors, online retail or home improvement, those lagged. Maybe one of the last things worth mentioning that's not really on this page, but the online chatroom platform that we know as Reddit made a lot of headlines during the quarter. In particular, one stock that was GameStop made a lot of waves in the, the small cap market. I mentioned this because it is a lot, GameStop became somewhat the poster child for low-quality stocks or low-quality companies. That's not to say, you know, provide an opinion on the stock. It's just to say for active managers that emphasize some of that, those improving fundamentals, this is not the type of stock that you would, were likely to own in your portfolio. And it, and it ultimately in January rose to meteoric level. So that's just something that, that we'll notice as we go through performance and some of the trends here. In the fixed income market, the key theme was the steepening of the treasury yield curve, arguably related to that steepening as well as maybe some of the themes that I mentioned in the equity markets is the outlook on inflation. We saw a dramatic spike in April's core inflation number. The key question now is, is where inflation goes from here? And how long the, the recent inflation spike can last? I think more and more as we, we get more data points, the consensus view appears to be that the more recent inflationary pressures are likely to be shorter-lived. I don't think it's necessary to move us back any pages, but I will just mention what we skipped on the April flash report, just some high-level comments. Investment returns were positive across all categories in April. From a performance standpoint, the, the option that has garnered the most attention from, from this board has been the small-cap option. Over the trailing three months that ended in April, that would be February, March and April. The option, the small-cap option was ahead of its index by one point four percent. It still has some ground to make up to, to get back to even or ahead on a year-to-date basis. But I just mentioned this to say that it is trending in the right direction. So then we will move to what I believe is going to be page one hundred and sixteen on Director Point. This is, these are our stoplight pages. This is meant to provide a watch list from, from Callan's point of view that goes beyond just performance. It's meant to flag issues with some of the other important factors, which would be organization, people, the process philosophy. And just, you know, flag any things that are noteworthy or of concern. I, I just will mention this at a high level that nothing has changed during the quarter to alter Callan's opinion of your managers. The one noteworthy item that is on the very last two pages here are some changes occurring at Galliard within the Stable Value Team. You'll recall Galliard is a manager that you all have had on watch lists for some time, mostly for some of those organizational reasons that, that Paul pointed out earlier. Here, there was a personnel departure, Laura Sell departed. She was the deputy head of client portfolio management. We recommend keeping Galliard on watch, but, but no further action is recommended at this time. Just moving on to pages one hundred and twenty-two and one hundred and twenty-three, I'll mention that the values of the plans are over fifteen billion as of quarter end. Over seven billion of that is in Goalmaker. So we will talk about Goalmaker later on in our presentation, but just wanted to point out that close to half of the assets are in that do-it-for-me Goalmaker solution. Page twenty-five, your passive options are all in line with expectations. And then on page twenty, one hundred and twenty-six, I'll mention that, you know, the same could go for your active options. And this is focusing on the performance, the, the top level composite performance level. This is what your participants experience. Those, those returns are in line with expectations. I will just mention your fixed income fund is above median and above the benchmark over the three and five-year periods. The performance is well ahead of the index over the last year, but ranks below median largely because of the more conservative nature of that TCW Core Plus relative to other Core Plus managers. The inflation responsive option is tracking the index. The large-cap core option, you know, have three years of live history. And that, in those three years, it is above median and ahead of the benchmark net of fees. Your international equity option on page one hundred and twenty-seven is performing well across all timeframes. And then finally, just wrapping up on, again, on, I think it's one hundred and twenty-seven. Your, maybe a few, a few pages before, your small-cap option is above median over the quarter. And, and, and for the one-year period, still lag the index over that one-year period. Again, this is the option where the board has made more recent changes. And just circling back on some of those comments that I made earlier on the April, April flash report. Small-cap option is showing some near-term improvement. Would do not recommend any additional, any additional changes to be made with the small-cap option at this time. And again, once, you know, we get some more data points here, we, we think they're, they will be more favorable here for this next quarter. And I know Wedge has been a manager that you all have spoken of quite, quite a bit. Just in January, consistent with a lot of other small-cap value managers, small and mid-cap value managers, given that GameStop theme. They underperformed but have outperformed their index in February, March and April to date. So show some improvement there. Any questions on performance before we move to our next agenda item or Callan's next item on the agenda?
Any questions? Proceed.
Thank you. Well, I will take this time to introduce Jana Steele. Jana is a specialist in Callan's defined contribution group. She's going to provide you with a summary of the administrative fee review. And you'll recall that we perform this on an annual basis for the board. We also do a glide path review that, that will follow with us after Jana's presentation. But these are updates from the last year, so you may remember it from last year. And with that, Jana, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, great. So what we're looking at here as a part of the fee update is a review of where your fees have changed over the last year and also how the plan demographics have changed over the last year. We supplement our, you know, regular three-year cycle of providing a full fee benchmarking, relying on a number of sources with this annual update. And, you know, we tend to see fees fluctuating based off of either participant count or asset volumes in the plan. And this isn't an interesting year as far as, as, you know, plan demographics overall. So we did review the plan fees against the information that we have in our own proprietary database. However, we also reviewed your fees against ten of the largest state deferred compensation plans that had a similar structure to yours. So for instance, multiple payrolls, high onsite education needs, et cetera. So if I could get you to flip to the next page, page two? Thank you. So what we're looking at on page two is a, a summary of how your plan has changed over the last year. And I know Prudential went through a number of these different numbers as a part of their, their presentation. I wanted to point out that we're looking at calendar year-end two thousand and twenty in the first, well, the second column from the right compared against the end of twenty-nineteen. And we showed the variance in the far right. We do this for the 401K and for the 457 plan, as you can see here. So in spite of this being a very chaotic year where participants were dealing with a number of different financial shocks, including things like access to childcare, unforeseen expenses, as well as potentially reduced incomes. We, we saw that there was actually an increase in the average participant balance as well as the median balance in both plans, likely due to, to some of the market performance. However, we also saw that the average deferral rate in both plans decreased slightly, likely again reflecting some of those other financial pressures that your participants were, were feeling at this point in time. And so overall, the plan has remained relatively consistent year-over-year. As noted before, you know, market performance has been exceptional. However, it's of course difficult to project where, where market performance will go. And so a better indication of where your participants' retirement success may lie is on that bottom line with that average deferral rate. So it is worth, worthwhile to look on an ongoing basis or a future dated basis as to how the deferral rate changes over time. as to how the deferral rate changes over time. But you did see a slight increase in the 401k plan as far as participant account balances. And then also a slight decrease in the 457 plan. So moving on to the next page. As a part of our fee study, we like to lay out where the different revenue sources are coming from. And we normalize these based off of other bids that we received. So here for the 401k plan, you can see the fees. I'm going to start on the far right column, actually. The fee is based on 2019 plan values. The participant administration cost on the second white line is $31, applied to the count of balances on the top line, comes in for a total revenue of about $8 million. Again, we see a slight increase in participant count in the 2020 values in the second column from the right. So your participant count increases by about $3,000. The administration cost stays the same at $31 for a total of $8.18 million. We also wanted to show the fee reduction that Prudential provided to NCISRP. And so we applied the fees beginning as of January 1, 2021, based on the 2020 values. And you can see that the overall cost savings ends up being about $700,000 for the plan. Now similarly, we looked at the, the number of loans. Is that the main participant transaction volume? And you can see that the number of loans actually decreased from 2019, where there were about 15,700 loans, down to almost 12,000 new loans. And that provided a decrease, although the unit cost of $60 per loan did not actually change. Now, part of the rationale for the, the lower loan count is because during the 2020 plan year, Congress authorized the coronavirus related distributions, which were in some ways more beneficial for participants in that they could spread, spread the taxes over a number of years. They did not immediately have to start making loan repayments or if loan repayments have been deferred, starting them in the, in the next year. And so we think that that is an artificial decrease and we would expect that, that volume to go up. But at the bottom section of the table, you can see that the total annualized revenue comes in at slightly more than, well, about $31.68 based off of the fee reduction that Prudential just provided. And that reflects a $3 cost savings based off of the prior year. And as you can see, the variation from 2019 revenue on the very bottom line is about $900,000. So overall, a very good cost savings for the plan. I wanted to note quickly that these are point in time calculations. And so the actual revenue collected by Prudential would have fluctuated throughout the year. And so just noting that, that variation. So on the following page, we show a similar breakdown. And I won't go into the same level of detail because it's largely following the, the other plan. If you, excuse me. If you remember, this plan had a slightly smaller participant increase. So the savings numbers are a little bit lower, but again, proportionately quite healthy for a plan this size. And then following that on page five, we consolidated the amount of revenue so that you could see if the fees were applied to the number of unique participants across both plans, which comes in at about 288,000 participants. The annualized revenue in 2021 is $33.93 compared to the $37 in 2020 and the $38 in 2019. So overall, quite healthy fee decreases across the board for this plan. I wanted to flip forward a couple of pages to page eight. And page eight, we show a breakdown of what the fees look like in comparison to similar plans that we have within the database. Notably for the 401k plan, there are very few 401k plans that are similar in size, meaning, you know, over, over 100,000 participants across the U.S. And so the pool there is definitely smaller. But again, you can see that $31 fee that you were paying prior to January 1 and the $28 fee that was being charged beginning January 1st is significantly below the median of $40 in the 401k plan and $42 in the 457B plan. It's noteworthy that the 457B plan is approximately one fifth the size of the 401k plan by participant count. And if these fees, if these two plans were priced separately, it's likely that the, the participants in the 457B plan would be assessed a higher fee. On the following page, this is where we show a, thank you. This is where we show a spread of what we saw in the largest state government deferred compensation fee arrangements. And we weeded out states that have a single payroll system or did not have the same robust meeting schedules, as those can add significant complexity and also costs to the administration of the plan. So looking at the top 10 largest plans, the participant count ranged from 57,000 to 360,000. The median and the average were both very close, around 170,000 participants. And the range of fees that we saw went from $18 per participant to $67 per participant. But again, that median and average that we're showing right around $40 is similar to what we saw in our, in the database on the prior page. So we feel like those are relevant market comparisons when looking at your plan. And again, you know, Prudential's been an active partner in helping reduce the fees. And I know the team there has been very proactive in looking at ways to make the plan more efficient. I'll pause for a second. Are there any questions?
No questions. Is there anything else?
That is all for this portion.
Mr. Treasurer, this is Steve. I do have one question.
Yes.
And, and this maybe is a broader question, but it, it may be a good time to ask it. And I don't want to delay us, but maybe it would be for a future conversation. Thinking about your earlier comments about retaining assets. We, we all know human nature is that strong incentives will drive behavior and sometimes badly, as we've seen with the, with the pension spiking. Is, is there some type of an incentive that we could create for retirees versus active participants to try to encourage them to leave their money in the plan? Even if it's a small percentage difference, is that an option legally? Or I just thinking about that and wondering if that might be a positive way to send an encouragement.
I've never heard of that, but I'll let Tom read.
Whether or not to lower fees for retirees that keep them staying in the plan? I don't know if that's possible or if Prudential's heard of that.
I'm just thinking it could be an issue with treating two different groups with a different fee. So I've heard of legal, but it sounds like it might not be.
We can look into that.
Okay. I, I'm just asking, maybe it's something to look into later. It may be an option, may not. But just, I thought about it and I thought I would raise the question. That's all.
Now, doing it and operationalizing it sound like two entirely different things. So we'll take that in consideration. Thank you. Other questions? All right. I guess we're on to James now. Thank you, Jana.
All right. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So what I'll do is my name is James Veraroso and I'm in the same team as Jana. So I'm one of our specialists that focuses on all things defined contribution. Within that group, I focus mostly on the investment side, particularly the default options. So today, what we're going to do is walk through the Goalmaker product and an evaluation of its suitability for the, the two defined contribution plans we'll be looking at today, which are the 401k and the 457. So if you could skip ahead to page two. Thank you. So the, the framework we're going to use that we walked through in this document is the DOL's tips. So back in 2013, the DOL provided a framework for evaluating target date funds. And given their status as a default, this is the framework we're going to be using when we look at Goalmaker. A lot of these things are pretty routine, it sounds like for this group. So looking at the funds, looking at the makeup, what we'll be doing today is digging a little bit deeper, looking at things like the fees. Within the document is some scenario analysis. We won't get into that on the conversation today, but if folks do have questions, happy to, to follow up on that. And it's really just looking at how these, how the Goalmaker portfolios fit within the broader framework of your plan, your plan design, and then even the ancillary benefit that folks have who are participating in these plans. So we can skip ahead to page four. Thank you. So just to, to level set, we'll be looking at their Goalmakers position within both the 457 and the 401k. As you can see, the 401k is the much larger plan. When you look at people who are using Goalmaker, Weston had mentioned the assets that Goalmaker, you know, the assets that reside in Goalmaker. And it's similar for your participants. So when you look at that Goalmaker users, you know, between these two plans, around 70% of your participants have some exposure to the Goalmaker portfolios. So I think that kind of underscores the importance of monitoring. Let's see, we can skip ahead to page seven. On my screen, it says it's loading. Is it loading on other folks' screens? There it comes.
It takes a minute to scroll pages.
When page seven loads up, which hopefully will any moment now, what we'll see is the level of participant deferrals. So how much are people electing to save within the plans? The numbers, they range for your all's population between four for your younger folks, up to around seven and then even reaching 10% for those kind of immediately prior to retirement. So when you see those numbers, just to give a little context to them, they're a little lower than what you would see when the 401k or the 457 is kind of your only retirement game in town. But because these plans are supplementary in nature, it's not surprising to see these rates where they are. And these compare pretty favorably to other large public plans we work with, where the DC plans are a supplement to what's going on on the BB side of the house. We could skip ahead to page nine. Just to give an overview of how Goalmaker operates. So what Goalmaker does is it's taking three pieces of information for each person using it. So if you're in within Goalmaker, it inputs your age. There's an expected retirement date. The default for that is 65. And then there's a preference. So you can say whether you're a conservative, a moderate, or an aggressive investor in terms of your risk tolerance. And then based on those three pieces of information, Goalmaker will put you at a point. And those points are an asset allocation, so some mix of the underlying funds. And one thing to point out for the folks on the board is that the Board of Trustees is the fiduciary with regard to the methodology and the asset allocation. So that does afford you some degree of control over how Goalmaker works. Skipping ahead to page 10, just to illustrate what sort of diversification people get using Goalmaker. So it does use a mix of your underlying building blocks and those are just shaded in in blue. And really, the takeaway here is your, your participants are getting kind of all the main food groups from an asset allocation standpoint. So from, you know, your conservative capital preservation, which is stable value fund, all the way down to things like non-US equity and the small cap fund. We can cut to 13. Just to illustrate what these allocations look like over time. So the bottom axis on 13 is your age. And then each of these different paths, so aggressive, moderate, conservative, will be determined by those inputs. So if you say I'm a conservative investor as a 25 year old, you'll have about 70% allocated to growth assets. Whereas if you're more aggressive in your orientation as an investor, you'll be at around 90%. And that red line there is the market average for target date funds. So really, these allocations put you, you know, right in the, in the range of that consensus glide path. So that consensus glide path is really somewhere between what Goalmaker classifies as aggressive and moderate. We could skip ahead to 16. Thank you. So Jana had touched on fees on the admin side. So we'd be remiss in a defined contribution conversation to not talk about fees on the investment side. So what you see here in the bottom right are the equally weighted. So for all the allocations that you can get for aggressive, moderate and conservative. So it's an equally weighted view of what your fees look like. So if you're an aggressive investor, over the course of your life, you would pay 16 basis points, moderate 21, conservative 20. And you can see, the good news here is unlike normal investment scatter charts, not scatter charts, bar charts here, where being on the bottom is not a good thing. In this case, being on the bottom when it comes to fees is a good thing. So you can see the average for a target date fund is 42, whereas your participants are hanging well below that. In fact, they're below that 25th percentile, which is good news there. And this is just a weighted average then of all those building blocks. So this kind of also reiterates the, the reasonableness of fees of the options that Goalmaker utilizes. We can skip to page 20 now. And by the way, if folks have questions as I'm working through this, I know you've been presented with a ton of information today, but by all means, ask away if any of this, you have questions on anything. Page 20, in terms of the performance, there's other information here when it comes to the single point in time performance. What I like to look at, being that these are multi-asset portfolios, is the Sharpe ratio. So it's a measure of performance adjusted for risk. And what you can see here is over both the eight year and five year period. For a younger investor, that would be the 2050 mixes versus someone who's right either in or on the cusp of retirement, the 2020 mixes. The Sharpe ratios look pretty good. And it's interesting that the conservative vintage has a higher Sharpe ratio than its aggressive vintage counterpart. And a lot of that is driven by the allocation to fixed income. Right now, fixed income looks very good from a Sharpe ratio standpoint. So that's why your conservative option looks, from a Sharpe ratio standpoint, better than that aggressive. So that's why your conservative option looks, from a Sharpe ratio standpoint, better than that aggressive. And let's see, I'll wrap up now if we skip ahead to 31. And 31 just has, one of the DOL tips that they mentioned, I think it's arguably the most important, is to document the process. So that's what this page here serves for. This 31 ties back to what was presented earlier on page two in terms of the DOL tips. And this just serves as documentation that each of those eight high-level DOL tips was examined. And it's completed, and you know, we're giving you the, the green check here, which means, you know, GoalMaker is doing a suitable job. So really, to wrap up then on 32, in terms of being a default option, we find that GoalMaker is suitable. The pros here, I would say the big ones, and you're able to leverage the, the scale of these plans, which, which translates to a pretty low fee. And you're able to consider something other than people's ages when you're getting to that asset allocation. And that becomes more and more important as people age, and their age tells less about them as life circumstances diverge. And then kind of, you know, if we're gonna poke holes, you know, I would say the, the kind of one consideration is just GoalMaker is proprietary to Prudential's record-keeping platform. That's not to say you'd ever have reason to leave Prudential. However, if that day ever did come, you would not be able to bring GoalMaker with you. So I would say, you know, if we're gonna point out shortcomings, you know, that to me is really just something to consider if that day ever did arrive. So with that, I will turn this back over to Weston unless there are any questions.
Any questions from board members?
If you were, this is Melinda. If you were giving us a report card grade, how would we rate?
You know, I'm a really hard grader, and I'm very reluctant to ever give out As. So I would rate you at a, we'll, we'll say a BB+.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's tough to get an A from me. You know, no one's perfect in, in the asset management world. So I, you know, I think, I think you all are doing well, and you know, if you were to, you know, this is kind of a pass/fail examination. It's either suitable or it's not. But I think there's a lot of things to like here, especially, you know, the low fee is always great to see as well as that level of control you all have in terms of the ingredients that GoalMaker can pull from. So being able to leverage all the work you do with the core lineup and having GoalMaker draw from that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? And next is Lauren.
So we're, we're planning to make a recommendation today for the International Equity Fund, both the active and the passive.
Let me interrupt you.
Sure.
Jan, if you fill the line, just did the suitability review. Are we at risk? All right, thank you.
So just as a reminder, this is going back to our board meeting in February of 2020. The board had approved recommendations made by Callan and staff. So as a reminder, what the board has already voted on included, one, changing the benchmark for the passive NC International Index Fund and the NC International Active Fund from the MSCI Acquex US Index to the Acquex US IMI Index. IMI stands for Investable Market Index. And basically, that's just including international small cap. So right now, the benchmark for both funds, it's more of a mid and large cap benchmark. This would allow the fund to invest in international small cap stocks as well. And then the board also voted to approve conducting a search for one or two international small cap options. So it was really over the past year, and you know, we were working on this throughout the pandemic, but we worked with Callan on the search. We screened a universe of international small cap managers and a lot of quantitative statistics. So looking at assets under management, performance, and risk. We continue to sort of, usually see it as a funnel, so narrowing down the managers that we were to and interested in. We reviewed a detailed search report prepared by Callan, which included a lot of detail, both on quantitative analysis as well as qualitative. And then we ultimately met, would have met with virtually five managers that were considered finalists. And then we had video calls with, with all those five finalists, really to go more in-depth on their organization, the investment team, and the process. And ultimately, two investment managers advanced to the final due diligence stage. That's Acadian International Small Cap, they're more of a value-focused manager, and WCM, which is more focused on growth. So given that, that we were doing this due diligence and research work sort of throughout COVID and the restrictions on travel, we did our typical onsite meeting. Typically, we would travel to the manager. This time, we did everything virtually. That being said, though, Callan had previously been onsite with each investment manager in 2019. So I'll, I'll first review some of the recommendations. It's a three-part recommendation. So first, on the passive, the index fund, where the board has already voted on changing the benchmark, we would recommend retaining BlackRock for that mandate. They do have an existing CIT available, and they're not changing the fees for us for this CIT. So fees would remain at 2.1 basis points. And then on the International Equity Fund, which is currently active, that's split 50% to Bailey Gifford and 50% to Mondrian. We are recommending to allocate a 14% target allocation to international small cap. And that basically is matching the small cap exposure that's in the benchmark. And then finally, we're recommending to allocate that 14% to the two investment managers, 7% to Acadian and 7% to WCM. Callan, I'll, I'll go through a few points on each investment manager, and then Callan will follow up on, with their presentation that really talks more about the structure of the white label fund going forward if we make these changes, as well as presenting a passive option as well. So first on Acadian, so as I mentioned, Acadian is focused on value. They were really selected as the preferred manager, given their strength in the investment process, strong performance, and long-term track record. They are a subsidiary of BrightSphere. So BrightSphere is actually renamed, they used to be called Old Mutual Asset Management, which is basically like a holding company for a lot of investment managers. So that's kind of the history there. But their, Acadian is a quantitative and systematic manager. So they're really, they really believe that markets are inefficient, and then they're, they're attempting like the mispricings in a systematic manner. So basically, they're running a quantitative assessment on stock-specific, peer-specific, as well as a top-down perspective. And they're running, one of the things that I liked about Acadian is they're running screens on over 100 different quantitative factors. So they're running screens on valuation, earnings, quality, and price movements. And I think it's because they're screening on such a large number of factors, it's really helped them perform better than some of their peers that are focused on pure value. And I think it's helped them to avoid some of the value traps that perhaps a good deep-value manager may experience. So really, given that, if you look at their performance, both the, the trailing time periods as well as calendar, calendar year, you can see some strong outperformance from Acadian, even given this environment until recently, when value had been underperforming. So the structure of this would be a separate account. Fees are 64 basis points. There's a tiered schedule, but at an asset level of 160 million, fees would be 64 basis points. Moving on to WCM Investment Management, they are the growth-focused manager. And they, they also have a strong track record. One interesting quantitative statistic with WCM is they really have a strong upside-downside capture ratio. So when you look at the numbers there, they're, they're outperforming much more than the benchmark on the upside, but they're providing downside protection when the benchmark is underperforming. So it's actually 170% of the upside return and only 73% of the downside return. So we kind of like that ratio there. But at WCM, so they are, they're held, NITXIS holds a minority interest in the firm, that 24.9% minority interest. And then the remaining ownership is spread across employees, about 34 employees. And just to note, NITXIS also has an ownership interest in Loomis Sales. And Loomis is our, is one of our large-cap growth managers of the plan, and they have a full ownership interest in Loomis. WCM, they really focus on forming principles when they're managing portfolio. One, they want to be different from the benchmark in order to outperform. So they do tend to have a higher tracking error. But given this is 7%, this could potentially be 7% of the overall fund, the tracking error is somewhat muted, since it's, you know, it's not like it's the whole portfolio. Second, they're looking for companies with an improving competitive advantage. So they're not just looking, do you have a competitive, a competitive advantage today? But what does it look like going forward as well? Three, a strong corporate culture. So they're looking at the strength and quality of management, they're very focused on culture. And then they're also looking for a relatively focused portfolio. So they want to hold about 50 to 70, 70 stocks in the portfolio with the idea that they don't want to dilute the portfolio with some inferior ideas. Our performance again has been very strong for WCM. Obviously, they've been in a positive environment for growth managers, which has definitely helped since, you know, they're focused on those traditional growth sectors. But performance has been strong. Fees on this account, again, this would be a separate account, and fees are 70 basis points. And then the fees on the white-label fund, if we were to allocate 7% to each investment manager, would increase from 32 basis points to 37 basis points. And, and Callan will go through some more statistics on the white-label fund structure with inclusion of these managers, as well as a potential passive option as well. So I could take questions now, or if you want to go through Callan's presentation first? Maybe we could do that? Move on, okay. So Weston and Elizabeth, if you want to move on to your presentation.
Great, thank you. This is Elizabeth Hood. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I want to be mindful of time, so I'm going to focus on comments that are additive to what Lauren said and avoid those that are repetitive. So maybe, oh, let's see, I think that's the appendix, right? So if we could go back to page 15, which I think might be slide 242. As Lauren mentioned, the goal today is to help the board determine how best to implement your decision to broaden that international benchmark from the MSCI Acquex US to the Acquex US IMI Index. And we'll walk through two options. First, we're going to look at the passive, so maybe back one page. Please? We'll start with the simpler one. So currently, the international passive equity option offered to participants is managed by BlackRock using the Acquex US Index Fund. And as Lauren mentioned, BlackRock also has an Acquex US IMI Index Fund. So effectively, it's the same index that you have now, but adding in small cap. So there is a product that exists for that at BlackRock. We looked at other providers, and we did not find anybody that was more compelling, either from a management and execution standpoint or from a fee standpoint. Importantly, BlackRock has agreed to maintain the same fee of 0.021% or 2.1 basis points, which is very compelling in this space. So even with adding this more expensive component, the fee stays the same. So we would recommend that the board approve a transition from BlackRock's Acquex US Fund to the Acquex US IMI Fund with no fee impact to participants. Any questions before we move to the active options?
Proceed.
Great. All right, the next page, there's a few more nuances in the international active equity option for participants. Currently, this option consists of two managers, Bailey Gifford, which is a more large-cap oriented growth manager, and Mondrian is a more large-cap oriented value manager. So the two complement one another well. So we're looking at how best to add small cap into the mix. So there's a few decisions to make here for the board. First, we looked at the allocation. So how much should we be putting into small cap? And we're recommending a 14% allocation, which is right in line with the percentage of small cap that's in the broad index. We don't want to add any risk by trying to time the markets and trying to guess if small cap is going to do better or worse. We really just want to give participants neutral exposure. So that's how we came up with that 14% allocation there. We also want to be style-neutral. So we've talked about this in the domestic equity side quite a bit. Same thing applies to international. We don't want to try to guess when value or growth will come out of favor. So we want to have equal exposure to both styles, both in large cap and in small cap. So you'll see that all of the recommendations are neutrally balanced by growth and value styles. And then the last decision point for the board is the type of managers and the number of managers. So in our initial recommendation, we had talked about having two active managers and, and again, balancing those equally so that we get good, broad, diversified exposure. We also looked at a passive component. So if we can't beat passive, we should just go passive. So we wanted to make sure to do a full comparison of active and passive options to give the board full information. So you'll see these in mixes one and two. Mix one, again, style-neutral, 86% large cap, 14% small cap, right in line. And the small cap option one would be passively implemented by BlackRock. So BlackRock does not have an existing product, but they can kind of make one. So they are proposing to blend three existing collective investment trust strategies they manage. It would be an EFA small cap, an emerging market small cap, and a Canada small cap blended together to round out that, that small cap component there. So that's the mix one, which is active, large cap, passive, small cap. And then mix two lines up with that original recommendation. So here, we recommend using active for two reasons, really. First is, within the plan structure, participants who want to be passive have that option. So the BlackRock option we just mentioned, for anybody who is more concerned about lower fees, they can invest passively. So we think the expectation here from participants is that this would be a fully actively managed option. So we support active there. We also have found that international small cap is an area where managers very consistently add a good bit of value over the index. So we think there's a compelling opportunity for active management. So essentially, you will get something for what you pay is the expectation here. So this is the, the portfolio structure that Lauren outlined, where we keep, again, the 86% of the portfolio in large cap balanced between Bailey Gifford and Mondrian, and allocating 7% to WCM, which is a more growth-oriented small cap manager, and 7% to Acadian, which is a more value-oriented manager. So that's the proposed, the two structure options for the board to consider. And on the next page, we look at the managers themselves. We'll start with a quick look at the managers. And then importantly, we want to look at how the managers fit within the total portfolio context. So you, we want to make sure you're comfortable with the underlying component, but also, we need to think about what the participancy and what the participant experience is, which is not just WCM or Acadian or BlackRock. It's, you know, the managers combined with Bailey and Mondrian. So starting at the manager level here on page six, you'll see we show on the left-hand side the index. As I mentioned, BlackRock doesn't have a product, so we're not showing the product here. This is just index information, but that is the fee that they have proposed, which is three and a half basis points for that passive exposure. So again, no excess return here, you're just getting market performance. To the right of that, you'll see WCM and Acadian on a standalone basis, and then importantly, that 50/50 blend. Because here, we're not just hiring one or the other, we're hiring them to complement one another and to bring balanced and diversified exposure there. So what you'll see is that both managers on their own have added value even after fees. So Lauren mentioned that these, WCM's fee is 70 basis points, Acadian's is 64. And both of those are well below their peer And both of those are well below their peer median average of 0.85%. And again, keep in mind, this is just going to be 14% of the total option. So participants only pay a portion of this within the option. And we'll look at that blended fee in a minute. So they are, they are higher, but in a smaller percentage. So on a gross basis, both managers have added value. Even after their respective fees, they've added a good bit of value. So that's the net excess return annualized line. So that's how much have they added value over the last five years after paying that fee? And when you put the two of them together in that 50-50 column, after paying fees, they've outperformed the index by 8.7%. So we, of course, we can't guarantee in the future. But when we look back, we would have been very well compensated for taking on that fee. And that's something that's really important to us. We agree with the treasurer. We want to be very mindful of fees and definitely not increase them if we're not going to be really, really rewarded for them. So we've seen good evidence there. I think it's also important to think about the overall pattern of performance. So when we look at the upmarket capture and downmarket capture, you'll see that both managers individually and combined collectively have added value in both upmarkets and protected capital in downmarket. So what this means is, over the last five years, if the market was up 10%, this 50-50 allocation between Acadian and WCM would have been up about 14.7%. And if the markets were down 10%, they would have only been down 8.2%. So protecting capital, but also participating in growth. So we think that's, again, a good trade off, looking both at return and risk and fees. We do find that that's compelling in terms of looking at the combination. And that's part of, Lauren mentioned the process we went through. And we looked at the individual managers, but also how well do they work together? And we feel that this blend is additive for participants. Okay. On page seven, or the next slide, we put this into the context of the total portfolio. And again, this is important because this is what participants actually experience. Because of the multi-manager structure, they can't just buy WCM or Acadian or Bailey Gifford. They get the whole option that you all designed. And so we want to look at what their experience would be and what the impact would be versus the current structure of adding small caps and how that would look with mix one, with that passive option, and mix two with that blend of Acadian and WCM. So here, kind of similar to what we saw with the managers on a standalone basis, but just adjusted overall. So relative to the current, you'll see again, good value add in upmarkets and downmarkets. So improved upmarket capture and downmarket capture is similar, ever so slightly lower. And better outcomes with the active management. You'll see the overall fee for the option would increase if you use active management. So today, participants are paying 0.33% or 33 basis points. And if we add active management, it will increase by four basis points. So then we look at those excess returns I mentioned on the other page. We've got the gross to net. So before fees, adding Acadian and WCM increases, oops, increases the return versus the benchmark, so outperformance of 3.2%. And after paying fees, 2.8%. So we feel like that's a pretty healthy margin of outperformance even after fees that gives us comfort in recommending. Again, we never take anything lightly when it comes to raising fees. So we feel like that's a pretty compelling argument that justifies the four basis point increase to participants in the overall option. And again, for better upside participation and better downside protection overall. Well, pause there, again, wanting to be sensitive to time and see. I know that's a lot of information. So I wanted to pause and see if anybody has questions or observations.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is Steve. I've read this extensively and I'm ready. I'd like to make a motion that we approved the three part recommendation by Lauren in full.
This is Melinda. I'll second that motion.
Motion second, further discussion. This is a question from the treasurer to Callan. Does Callan receive any compensation in any form from Bailey Gifford, Mondrian, WCM, or Acadian at any level of the corporate structure of Callan?
Let's think about that first. Yes, we do. It is in no way, shape, or form related to any recommendations or advice that is given to clients, that the managers do pay Callan for consulting and for research and advice.
Okay.
And that is, we do fully disclose that in all of our reports to NCFRP every quarter and in all of our search materials.
Just a small follow up question in the spirit of transparency. Would you say that that compensation that you receive for those things that you just mentioned dwarfs the compensation that you receive for being our consultant?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it. Did you say it's, or you asked if it's more than?
Does the compensation that you receive from Bailey Gifford, Mondrian, WCM, and Acadian, that those compensation items that you just mentioned, what we'll call outside compensation, does that in totality dwarf the compensation that you receive from us proportionally to be our consultant?
It does not. I honestly don't know the exact amount they pay us. That there's a separate division that provides those consulting services. And as part of our, we have processes in place to make sure no conflicts materialize. And as such, I don't even know how much they pay us. I just know that they're clients. I can tell you that division represents around or less than 10% of our overall revenue. And so the rest of that revenue, about 76% comes from consulting to clients like North Carolina. So I would say our consulting revenue definitely dwarfs any revenue that we receive from consulting to investment managers. I could have our accounting department follow up with the exact dollar amount. That's something that we can make available and they can provide it directly to you. But Weston and I never have any information on that. Again, for the obvious reason that we don't want to be conflicted and having any interaction there.
And just for the record, I just want to state, not to belabor this, but you're, you're supposed, you, we hire you to be an objective third party source who is receiving compensation from the people you're recommending. That's, that's accurate, correct?
Yes. And we're also recommending managers from whom we don't receive compensation. So there is no bearing on that compensation and the recommendations that we make. So you're correct, there are some managers from whom we receive compensation. And also, that does not impact our recommendations that we make.
Or going back to the motion that's on the floor.
Sorry, sorry.
Are any of these groups, groups that you do not receive outside compensation from?
Oh, let's see. No. The BlackRock. Yes, BlackRock, Acadian, and WCM are, we do receive compensation from all three.
So for the record, for our board, in the spirit of transparency, you're not, you have not recommended any one to us that you're not receiving compensation from?
In this particular search, that's correct.
We have a motion on the floor for the reasons I think that you're probably picking up on in my questioning. I'm more in favor of option mix number one. But we do have a motion on the floor and we have a second. And any further discussion or questions? And I'd like for all of my questions and also all those answers to exactly be reflected in the record. Exactly. Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, the clerk will call the rule.
Hold up. Bella Thomas, if I'm in favor of that. Ray Johnson?
Hi.
James Lumpson?
Hi.
Michael Lewis?
Hi.
Nels Roslin?
Hi.
Wynden Ller?
The eyes have it. I guess we're on, are we on 12?
Yes, compliance update.
How long is that?
I can be very brief, compliance and stable value update.
Okay.
Very quick. Four to be in, probably about five minutes.
Okay. Bear with us, folks.
So first, just on that compliance review, none of our managers held any holdings during the quarter that appears on a prohibited list. We continue to monitor all manager guidelines on a daily basis. And there were no issues during the quarter. I'll move on to the stable value custodian transition update. And Paula Galliard had touched on some of this already. But we did transition assets representing 2.1 billion from Wells Fargo to BNY Mellon on April 1st. In total, it was just over 2,000 positions were transferred over to BNY Mellon. And both Wells Fargo and BNY Mellon worked together to reconcile all of those positions. All of the separate accounts that were previously custodied at Wells Fargo are now with BNY Mellon. This does include one separate account that's managed by Dodge and Cots that actually continues to be custody of BNY Mellon because they were actually previously. Given the structure of a separate account, or separate account guaranteed investment contract, those type of investments, actually the insurance wrapper sort of has oversight of the custodial relationship. So that account was already with BNY Mellon. So now we've moved everything else over. And Galliard continues to provide the total book value valuation for that full stable value fund. We have engaged Clifton Larson to perform a full audit of the transition. And this is scheduled to begin sometime within the next week or so. Happy to take any questions on that. Otherwise, we can move on to the 403B review. If we start on page three of the 403B report, looking at total assets at the end of the first quarter, we had 28.2 million in the plan with 14.8 million in passive and 13.3 million in active funds. If we move to performance on page four. I'll actually go to the, to the active managers. Metropolitan West outperformed their benchmark, although both the benchmark and the manager both had negative performance for the quarter. This is really due to interest rates rising during that time. But Metropolitan West's relative outperformance for the quarter was due to their issue selection in corporate credit as well as their allocation to mortgage backed securities. And also, they were short duration relative to the benchmark as well, which helped them in a raising rate environment. Moving on to the principal diversified real asset fund. They did outperform their benchmark in the quarter. Fund was up 4.2% and as real assets showed really strong performance in the quarter. And their relative outperformance was due to strong manager performance within the natural resources sector. Moving on to the Vanguard Windsor Fund. This fund outperformed their benchmark just slightly in the quarter. And they were overweight utilities and communication services and also overweight consumer discretionary, which helped their performance in the quarter. Moving down the line to TRO Price, they did trailer benchmark in the quarter. And it was really their stock selection in the tech and consumer discretionary sectors that detracted from performance. They did receive the April monthly report and they did outperform by about 68 basis points in April. So we're seeing a strong start to, to this quarter. Moving on to DFA. So DFA's small cap portfolio outperformed the benchmark for the quarter and is now actually outperforming on a one year basis as well, given the recovery that we've seen in value stocks. So if you remember, they've been underperforming for a while. And we always kind of talk about their, it's really their process that's causing the underperformance. This is kind of a good example. You can see in an environment where values are performing, they actually have done well. And then finally, Bailey Gifford, the International Equity Fund. They did underperform their benchmark for the quarter, given the growth underperformed value. But they are still showing outperformance for the one year term. So happy to take any questions on that.
Was that all three of them?
Yes.
Sorry, I lost. All right. We're now doing to our public comment section. Did anyone sign up for public comment? Well, now, not quickly, it takes as long as you need. Go around the, go around the board and before I turn it over to board members. And I'll start with the newest board member. Just want to give Jeff an opportunity to say hello and offer any comments that you wish.
Sure, thank you, treasurer. Certainly excited about the opportunity to work with these plans and to serve the members of North Carolina. Looking forward to working with all of you in the board as well as the partners on the phone. And lastly, I understand I have some very large shoes to fill.
Heels.
Heels to fill. Certainly, I'll do my very best to try to live up to the reputation that Mary has built here. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for making the choice to come here. As I previously mentioned, part of that decision was based on the culture that I know you, for lack of a better word, have grown up in. And, and so when I say, if you get the why, if you get the why right, the house not so difficult. And I think you've heard that probably 5,000 times. I bleed burgundy. Yeah, you bleed burgundy. So thank you, welcome. Board members, any board members would like to say anything?
Great meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other board members from the phone? This is, this is, congratulations to Mary on her pending retirement. Any others?
Yeah, this is Wynden. I want to thank you for having me. And I hope that I can help create value for the board and for the employees of the state.
Thank you, Wynden. Thank you for participating. I was supposed to go to you first. I just said I was going to go to you first. Apologize for not doing that. Board members, you have a really thick board book here. And about 40% through that is some examples of the outreach that Christie and staff have been working on as far as our outward communications. And, you know, it's, as I said earlier, just trying to drive home, if you do it better, cheaper, go do it. And this is a decision you never have to make. You can stay here forever. And a lot of that's being reflected. And there are examples of that, that we can provide you larger print examples of if you require any of that. So be sure to go and just take an opportunity to look at those materials because that's, that's our, as some of you know, my mom was a switchboard operator. And, you know, the switchboard is the front door of any place back in the day. And in some respects, the work that Christie does is the front door to the state. So I appreciate that. I'd like to close our meeting in honor of two deputies who lost their lives in the line of duty in the last four weeks. Attended that funeral three weeks ago. Deputy Ward and Deputy Fox from the Walt Hoggard Sheriff's Department. As most of you have heard me say too often, when I'm asked, what do we do here? We're the check delivery business. That's what we do. We just sent out 542, 342 baskets, scared you, Tom. Tom just sent out 342,000 checks to those that are taught, protected, or otherwise served. That totaled about $560 million. It's going out sometime in the next 48 hours, I presume. Or maybe a couple of days, yeah, a couple of days ago, yeah. And my point of saying that to you is that, you know, those people receiving those checks are, those are all blessings, you know. But unfortunately, Tom, supplemental, and the retirement system have to deliver checks that are blessings. And those are to the families and the descendants who have lost their life, line of duty. And as I've said in other board meetings, in visiting with those three weeks ago, that, you know, no Mother's Day, and no Father's Day, no holiday, no day is ever going to be the same. Not only for those mothers and fathers of those fallen deputies, but also their family, their extended family, and the close community that exist in most sheriff's departments across North Carolina, who we represent in these plans. So we will end with a moment of, a brief moment of silence, and then I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Wynden, would you like to make a motion to adjourn in honor?
Sure, I would like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting on May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you. In honor of Deputies Ward and Fox.
I second that, Shbella.
That motion second, further discussion? The clerk will call the rules. Sorry, treasurer, follow? Yes. Ray Johnson?
Aye.
James Lumpston?
Aye. Great meeting, thanks everybody.
Melinda Barrett?
Aye.
Michael Lewis?
Aye.
Dels Roslin?
Aye, and thank you, everybody.
Aye.
We adjourned.